All right, we will start the September 8, 2020 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, first item of business, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Do we have any? Mr. Duffield? No? Mr. Muldoon? Mr. Hurdman?
No.
Ms. Brenner? Ms. Dixon? That's okay. Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Okay, Mr. Avery?
No.
All right, and I have none. We'll go into item number two, proclamation recognizing September 17 through the 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week. Do we have any representatives in the other room from the Daughters of the American Revolution? Okay, why don't you go on up to the podium up there? I'll read the proclamation, and then if you'd like to say anything, and then just stick around and I'll make sure you get a copy of this. So we will start, whereas September 17, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's foundational document and is celebrated annually during the week of September 17 through the 23rd, and whereas the Constitution begins with a preamble that is echoed throughout history, which is justifiably reprinted in whole, we the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America, and whereas we continue through amendments in the political process to strive for a more perfect union, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Now therefore, I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in the City of Newport Beach, and encourage our residents to reflect on the meaning and import of our founding document. So with that, if you have anything to say, you are welcome to.
Of the Colonel William Cavill chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, we graciously thank you. We look forward to celebrating this grand document with our local schools in the community. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. We'll make sure we get this out to you in just a moment. All right, we'll move to item number three, which is short-term lodging. And I guess Mr. Juerges, he'll kick it off.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill and City Council members. Simone Juerges, Community Development Director. I'm just going to let the PowerPoint load up here, and we'll go ahead and just kick off the, just a brief presentation. So I've got about 11 slides, and we'll go ahead and start. So this is just a continuing discussion of short-term lodging. As the council members recall, an ad hoc committee was formed with council members Joy Brenner, council member Diane Dixon, and council member Jeff Hurdman. They've been working really, really hard on short-term lodging. They've been working for 18 months now with regards to the subject. Just a little background, there is some history here, so just for the council members, just to recall, you have adopted two emergency ordinances which are still in place, so EO 004, which really restricts no new short-term lodging permits can be issued, and it's a three-night minimum stay throughout the city of Newport Beach, and our emergency ordinance number six, which imposes a four-night minimum specifically on Newport Island. So just a little reminder, those two emergency ordinances are still in place. And if the council does recall that they've adopted ordinance 2020-15, that went into effect on August 13. So that is what we've coined internally, just our Phase One ordinance, and that was a significant change to the short-term lodging ordinance that we have currently on the books. And I just highlighted some, four bullet points there on the very top, you know, all advertisements need to have a permit number. The hosting platforms have responsibility to ensure that legal units are posted, a lot of rules with regards to good neighbor policy and a nuisance response plan, and the council has increased citations. So this ordinance is now in effect, when in fact, August 13. We are rolling this program out. We've been talking to a number of our residents and permit holders. We get a lot of questions about what are we doing for enforcement? Well, I've listed some of the things we've done so far with regards to enforcement on the new ordinance only. So we've reached out and notified all our permit holders of the new code change. This is our new ordinance. Our revenue division has hosted a public workshop for the permit holders. That was done virtually, and we did that on August 4, and we had maybe over 100 participants in that workshop. Our code enforcement staff continues to educate the permit holders, and we do respond to compliance. Again, we are a reactive program from a code enforcement standpoint. And something that staff has been working on for a while now, and we're about to launch it, is that we're going to launch a 24-hour answering service, and that should be launched by October 1. And what that will do, it was allow residents who are living next to short-term lodging, if they have a late-night complaint, they can contact the answering service, and that answering service will reach out directly to the property owner to address their complaint. This is something that staff has been working on, and we're looking forward to it, because that way we can actually collect data from short-term lodging complaints. Right now, it's a little difficult. We only have a reactive program, so this answering service will allow those complaints to come in. We can track where the hotspots area, and then we can address those issues as they So the ad hoc committee has been working, they worked on the Phase One, and we continue to work on a Phase Two. And the Phase Two is pretty straightforward. The ad hoc committee is recommending a minimum night stay, and again, just a reminder, your emergency ordinance has a three-night minimum stay and a four-night for Newport Island, and an ultimate cap on short-term lodging permits. And the current activity we have right now is we have about 1,500 active short-term lodging permits. The emergency ordinance right now does not allow us to issue any new permits, so if we don't have a cap for short-term lodging, there's an enormous potential for more short-term lodging permits to be issued, maybe up to over 10,000 permits to be issued. Hence, the committee really wants to impose some type of minimum cap on the total short-term lodging permits. So what the committee did, and this is going to be an amendment to our local coastal plan, so the committee did recommend a minimum night stay and no new permits issued, and that amendment had to go to the planning commission. So we took these changes, not because we wanted to, but we had to go to the planning commission for them to take a look at this first. And this was a really good discussion at the planning commission level. The committee at the time recommended a kind of a tiered system, three-night minimum for owner occupied and six-night minimum for non-owner occupied. So your duplexes, you would live in one unit, and you would rent the other unit. That other unit that was rented would be a three-night minimum. For those that are non-owner occupied, which are the single-family dwellings, that'd be a six-night minimum. And for the limit on permits, there'd be no new permits to be issued. Whoever has a permit now will get to hold on to it. The committee's not taking away anything from anybody. They want to allow people to continue to utilize their residence for short-term lodging if they hold on to a permit. The planning commission couldn't wrap their arms around these recommendations. They were just not ready, and we had a long discussion. A lot of public comment came. The planning commissioners, you know, understood what the goal was, but they just weren't ready to make any recommendation for approval just at that night. They could not recommend approval, and so they did not recommend approval of this. And that's fine. The committee took their comments, and they valued their comments, and they valued the community's comments, and so they refined their recommendations. And so the recommendations for the council this evening is changed from what was presented to the planning commission. So the ad hoc committee is recommending just to standardize it as a three-night minimum stay and a cap on short-term lodging permits of up to 1,550 permits. Again, we have 1,510 issued, so this would just give a little bit of breathing room for that cap. And if we have a cap that's more than the permits issued, we have to develop a waiting list. So we did some surveys. We went out to, throughout Orange County, San Diego, and LA County, just trying to understand who else has a minimum night stay. And, you know, I gotta say, Newport Beach is very progressive with our short-term lodging ordinance and our permit program. Those are a few cities that actually have a minimum night stay. City of Anaheim has a three-night minimum. Dana Point has a two-night. Oceanside has a two-night. And Solana Beach has a seven-night. So that is just those cities that have a permit program and have an ordinance with regards to short-term lodging. There's a lot of cities just don't even allow short-term lodging. A lot of coastal cities don't allow short-term lodging. With regard to cap on short-term lodging permits, we only found two cities that had one. City of Anaheim has a cap of 277 units, and they're amortizing that down to 235 units. But if you go on the AirDNA website, and that's just a platform that curates all the data that's out there, Anaheim actually has about 1,200 units that are active. So we look at those, those are illegal units. The City of Anaheim is trying to control their issues too with short-term lodging, and they want to allow only 235 units in their jurisdiction. City of Orange is going through the kind of the same process. There are 280 units active. They don't have a permitting program, but they want to go ahead and recognize maybe up to 300 units. And their planning commission has approved that and is still pending with the city council that has not been adopted or heard yet. So those are the only two cities that we found that actually have a limit on short-term lodging. You know, what are other cities doing? City of Huntington Beach, they don't allow short-term lodging at all, but they have 557 units that are active currently, so that's something that they're struggling with. City of Laguna Beach just adopted, at the city council level, but the coastal commission has not adopted it, that they are not allowing short-term lodging in residential zones, only in the commercial zones with a use permit, but they're going to recognize and grandfather those ones that are existing in the residential zones. They already permitted 32 units. They still have another 286 units to work through. City of Santa Monica has a home sharing ordinance. So what that is, is that the property owner needs to live onsite, and the property owner can rent out a bedroom or a part of the home, so that's home sharing. So they've permitted 55 units, yet they still have 962 active units in Santa Monica. So before I wrap it up here, just want to inform the council what we have coming up next. I've talked about our 24-hour answering service, which is going to launch by October 1. Our revenue division is going to come back to the city council just to update their short-term lodging permit fees. Our renewals are in October, so we don't have a fee for the renewal, so that's what revenue is going to be working on. And if we can get some consensus this evening, we'd like to return back to the city council at the first meeting of October with an ordinance. So I'm just going to close out here, Mr. Mayor, if there's a consensus from the council on moving an item forward with regards to a three-night minimum stay and a ultimate cap of 1,550 units. Thank you.
All right. I had a question. So in addition to this, is there any discussion about removing any of the, so we've got two emergency ordinances on the books dealing with short-term lodging. Are we looking at revisiting either of those if we move forward with any of the comments here?
That wasn't part of the discussion with the ad hoc committee, but again, that's under the council's purview. If they want to put that on the agenda for a future hearing, we can put that on the agenda for further discussion.
Okay. Before we go to public comment, any questions or comments at the dais? All right. Then I suspect we'll have a little bit of public comment on this one. So we'll start in the community room, and then we'll eventually get over to the phones. So what we'll do, just quickly, so everyone understands, we've got a little bit of a feedback issue. We found out about it at the last meeting, so what that'll mean is that when you're in the community room, we'll be muted, which means that I won't be able to talk directly to you unless I kind of signal for it. So just expect that after the speaker is done, they can go ahead and the next speaker can come up. Since we're trying to do social distancing guidelines, you don't need to queue up, but just be prepared to, you know, get up and speak after the next speaker. All right, we'll kick it off with our first speaker, so go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Hal Sears, and I'd like to speak regarding the short-term ban on new rental permits, particularly the ban pertaining to Balboa Island. And I took the liberty of sending several videos to the council, all the council members, and I took video of this weekend, the busiest weekend on Balboa Island with visitors to Newport Beach, and you could have thrown a bowling ball down the boardwalk in front of my house at 3:30 PM on Friday, and again at 7:30 PM on Friday. There was nobody there, and I could have gone five blocks one way, five blocks the other way, looked down the side streets. There was nobody there. So this idea that you have, that you need to limit short-term rentals on Balboa Island, is a complete misnomer. It's counterproductive. The Balboa Island Ferry just celebrated their 100th year anniversary. People have been renting front units, back units on Balboa Island for over 100 years. There was more people on Balboa Island 30 years ago, young families sitting on front of their patios, having barbecues, enjoying a beautiful short-term rental in Balboa Island many more 30 years ago and 50 years ago than there are today. Now, I understand you may have other issues with other areas of Newport Beach where short-term rentals are a problem, but utterly, I do not see any problem existing on Balboa Island for granting more short-term rentals. I understand that the council passed this ruling, and you mentioned it maybe beginning of summer, it was back in May, that due to COVID, that you want to limit short-term rentals in Newport Beach. That is an absolute ridiculous idea. Let's get this straight, everybody. You don't allow short-term renters to have a short-term rental in Newport Beach. You're increasing COVID in Newport Beach. All the short-term rentals on Balboa Islands today are sold out. What you're forcing those families to do is go rent two or three hotel rooms. You're not enabling them to go home, self-isolate as a family unit, barbecue in their front patios, and not spread COVID. So what you've done is just completely counterproductive. You need to take this off of your, well, put it on the agenda right now, and take a vote to repeal this ridiculous rule. It makes absolutely no sense. Don't wait any longer. You've already injured your constituents. If you just look at the people that have been in line to rent their houses out over the valuable summer months, we can do the math, 15 short-term rentals, $500 a night times 100 days, you've cost your constituents $750,000 in lost revenue. You're continuously costing your constituents over $250,000 a month in lost revenue. Now, where does this revenue go? This goes to pay their mortgage payments. This goes to pay their property taxes. This goes to pay some of the upkeep to offset some of the expense, and it's very expensive to own a home on Balboa Island. So your rules are completely counterproductive. They're without merit. They need to be taken off today. You're causing major harm to constituents. And not only that, you're robbing all these families that want to come to Newport Beach.
All right.
And they can't come here. These could be ambassadors for our neighborhoods with all the memories that they would have in a short-term rental. So please, think about what you're doing. Repeal this ridiculous law. Do it now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker then, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. I know this comment is going to pain one of the committee members, but to the extent the committee and the city staff were seeking input from the general public and not just from the other council members, I have to say, the city didn't do a really great job of informing the public of exactly what you were seeking input about this afternoon. The agenda says only that you will seek input from the city council on recommendations for the next phase. It does not say what the recommendations were, so nobody could consider them in advance of the meeting. And there was a promise that more details were going to be posted on Friday. The details were never posted. The main comment I want to make is that I have always a concern about laws that create classes of citizens that are treated differently from others. If you are going to oppose a cap, and if the cap was respected, although from the presentation it sounds like they are not, this would create in Newport Beach for the first time a class of citizens who have grandfathered in the short-term lodging privilege that goes with their property, so that they could sell that to some other future operator at a markup, their property being more valuable than somebody else's, and their similarly situated neighbor would not have the ability to do that because there are no new permits available. That's a problem I think you need to contend with, and this may seem a little radical, but the most equitable solution I can think of is if you did have a cap, the city should institute an annual lottery in which each year, all of the permits are put up in a drawing for all the people that are interested in them, so all the people that are interested have an equal shot at them. That has a drawback, that if, well, it has an advantage, that that would move the problem around. It may have its drawbacks. The final comment I wanted to make is the last slide that the Community Development Director showed, said that this item might be coming back to the city council at their first meeting in October, I believe, because this is amending or recommending changes to the planning code and the coastal plan. Like the previous recommendation, I believe it needs to go through the planning commission, so it'd be helpful to know if you move forward with this today, when it will be going to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Charles Gayton, and I'm not yelling at you, but I am going to project because the microphone's not working in the room, so forgive me if it comes off as yelling. There's a bunch of different points I'd like to make, and I'll make them as quickly as I can. First of all, I was here the last meeting when the gentleman read this whole new Phase Two, and I have to say, there was a disdain in his voice for a short-term landlord. And I really don't quite understand it, when we contribute millions and millions and millions of dollars for room taxes, our renters, short-term renters, go to grocery stores, go to restaurants, go to rental places, go to drugstores, and yes, go to liquor stores. And this whole idea that we're this big blight on Newport Beach is, there's got to be something else there, because it was said, oh, there's a traffic and a noise problem. Well, you know, yeah, there's a traffic and noise problem everywhere in Newport Beach. And it's not, that's not the issue, because when the gentleman who was, for some reason, so against short-term things, was reading Phase Two, he actually on his chart said, the number of complaints have gone down, and the number of units have gone way up, which tells me that's not the problem. So then I've got to relay a quick story to the crowd here. I inherited a house in Oahu, and the hotel industry spent over $70 million to get short-term completely cut off. I'm not accusing, I'm not suggesting, I'm just telling you, hotels do not want us in business. My place, two-bedroom, bath and a half, on the water, pretty nice, and I get under $200 a night. You try to do a two-bedroom suite anywhere in Newport Beach or anything like that, it is going to be $400, $500, $600. So I would just love to be able to count on my city government to tell me that it's not the hotels that are driving this, because there's something just not right when the number of complaints go down and the number of units went up, that we're such a problem. I don't get it, and I would love to hear the answer.
All right, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rosson, and what I would like to point out is, looking at the presentation tonight, many of the cities around us, they show the number of permitted units and the number of units that are operating that are illegal. So has the evaluation been done of who is causing the issues of noise, trash accumulation, and all that? Is the permitted units in Newport Beach or the illegal units? The Phase One hasn't been implemented yet. How about implementing it, evaluating what happens, what the results are, and really enforce, enforce, enforce? If there are illegal units that are causing the problem, try to get rid of those. Now you have the power to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Debbie Gubernik, and I am a short-term rental owner. I'm also a mother of three and a resident on the peninsula. Today, I come to share with you just a plea to remember, the reason why a lot of us are speaking up is for the peace of our families, and that's what I'm here to discuss today, the need for peace for my family. I am a short-term rental owner, as I mentioned, as it sounds as many of you are, and like the gentleman who talked about, the fond memories you have, and the fond memories we want to create for others. That truly is one of the reasons why we have a short-term rental. We want people to love the town as much as we do. However, I will say, in the past three years, I have been offended, disgusted, interrupted, and really put off by the amount of emphasis on earning dollars and property owners earning dollars instead of the focus being on properties for peace, enjoyment, rest, and so on. I have three children. All three were forced to do school at home. Living where we do, that means closing your windows when it's 80 degrees so that you can do your work, because there's a lot of noise and commotion outside for people who come here to rent short-term. I don't have any problem with the renters, like I said. Beautiful place to build memories. Wonderful that you can roll a bowling ball and not hit anyone at 3:00 in the afternoon on Balboa. That's fantastic, but there's certain areas where that's just simply not the case. And if we want to create some consistency, we've got to have consistency in our rules. Why is it that one area has a limit of 30 days? Why is it that others were saying, let's do three days? I can tell you, why does that interruption, distraction, and so on occur? I see it more frequently on the three-day rentals. When somebody comes in and they pull up a van next to my house, they unload their car, another cleaning crew comes in, so they can clean the house, top to bottom, so somebody else can come in four hours later with their whole family. The commotion is incredible. And if you think it's not, you simply haven't lived on the peninsula during these summer months and experienced it from that point of view. I will say, I appreciate all of the research that has been done. It is incredible, the amount of time each of you in this room has put into this issue and what our city council has put into this issue. But I would just say, at the heart, it's really, we want this to be a peaceful, enjoyable place for people. It's great to have the revenues come in. I agree. I would love to use those revenues to pay for my kid's college. I'm just like you in that way. But let's strike the right balance, and I think the only way to do that is to cap the number. It's ridiculous lest we become what you see in Pacific Beach, what you see now in Mission Bay, the areas of San Diego where things have just kind of shifted into this hotel community type of a thing. We don't want to be that. We want to be the Newport Beach that is family-focused and family-centered. And I'm telling you, the folks I see come in on a three-day rental are not families. That's not who's coming in. It's the bachelor party, it's the 40th birthday, it's the 16th birthday, and it's not enough to contribute to this family environment that we were hoping for. The second point, capping tenancy.
Sorry, you reached three minutes.
Oh, my apologies. Capping Tennessee and capping, my mistake, sorry.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. Thanks to you and the staff for considering this issue, and to all of you that are here with a voice. So my name is Denise Oberman, and I live in one of those areas where, on the oceanfront, on the Balboa Peninsula, in an area that is not concentrated with short-term rentals. However, in close proximity to me, there are areas that are concentrated with short-term rentals. I think the reasons to manage the number of short-term rentals, they're very clear, they're actually stated in the body of the ordinance itself, to preserve the integrity of the communities, to preserve the physical stock of the communities so that they can be residential communities that have integrity. And we have a new one that a lot of people may want to scoff at, but I see everybody in this room is wearing their masks. We do have a reality of public health and safety, and in our coastal communities, which is where the preponderance of the short-term rentals are, we have very dense residential properties, and frequently, they don't even maintain the required six-foot side setback. So there are a lot of reasons to manage the number of rentals, short-term rentals in these areas. I agree completely with I agree completely with the prior speaker. I apologize, I didn't hear your name from over there. But there is definitely, there is definitely a relationship between these very short periods of stay, such as the three days and, you know, trying to, trying to split the hairs on whether that minimum should be three, four, or five. The reality is that the residential properties are not run as hotels are. Residential owners, even if they have agents, do not have the infrastructure, or quite honestly, the caring, to be able to regularly and consistently manage the impacts. So I believe Mr. Juerges had talked about a complaint-driven concept. Is it equitable to the residents of a community to have to live where they have to make perpetual complaints based on short-term rentals? It's almost impossible to go directly to the people that will typically do these very short-term rentals, because they don't care and they are generally hostile when you ask them for simple neighborly considerations. So for these reasons, I do agree that, I agree with the cap that has been recommended. I think it's been recommended very thoughtfully. It's not depriving any of the people that considered and purchased properties where there were already authorized short-term, 30-days-or-less uses and where they can have permits. That is very well, it's very well thought through. It's not taking all of them away. It's a reasonable solution that doesn't deprive anybody of equity. And as to the three-night minimum, I am not a proponent of having such a short term as three nights. So I would ask that that be carefully studied and reconsidered. Last comment is relative to enforcement.
So Denise, you hit three minutes, so if you can make that quickly.
Okay, this city has a problem with enforcement. To assume that enforcement is going to do it for our neighborhood integrity is blowing smoke. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Angela Haryu, and I'm a relatively new short-term rental owner. We have, we're in the stopping point because of COVID. We don't have a permit yet. But I just wanted to put a face to my name, just to give my example. We purchased in November of 2019, and because of COVID and the stop, I also have three young kids that are sitting right there. We have not been able to rent it. And so right now, we are in a bind because of not being able to rent it. We've done a remodel on the property, updated everything, and made it look beautiful. And, you know, Newport Beach is a place my husband and I have, we've lived in floor ten and Diamond Bar, and we love it here so much. But the reality is, these homes are very expensive, and short-term rental does offset the income that younger families like myself and my children need to live here. So although there's these short-term rentals who have the established short-term rental income, and that's fabulous, please realize there are younger families who also want to live in Newport Beach on the peninsula. My husband surfs, I paddleboard, my children, my son boogie boards. I mean, we, you know, so you have to put a name to a face and realize that short-term rental property should be for all. And so I just wanted to point that out. Also, on our property, we are neighbored by a long-term tenant, we have renters. There's like two families, a duplex property, and a short-term. And the short-term property, since we can't rent it right now, my husband and I have been vacationing there during this time. The short-term rentals who live there, they're wonderful. They're families who are boogie boarding, who are sitting on the patio having a glass of wine. There is no noise complaint, there is nothing. The long-term leasing tenants, I'll be honest, those are the problem ones. There's a, there was a girl with water bottles hammered, throwing water bottles at the street, at cars. And I had to call the tops on the long-term, like the long-term tenants. So my point is, in my experience, we've owned this property since November 2019. It's not the short-term rentals from where I am, it's the long-term ones. But I just wanted to put a name to my face that this stop, this, especially the emergency order, and then the cap, the three-day cap, and capping the short-term rentals will directly affect my family, my children, because we need the income to offset our life, our way of, I mean, we're not, we can't just afford this property without the rental income. And eventually, we want to make it our permanent home, but we're just not there yet. And so we're just hoping that this is our stepping port to get, you know, to be on the peninsula forever and live there forever, because we surf and we have fun. I just want to put a name to my face. It's, I'm glad everyone has established ones, but on the newer ones, there are newer families, younger families, myself, where we just, we want to be here too, and a cap is going to hurt my family, will hurt my children. So I just want to put a name to a face and, and say, I don't think there should be a three-day cap, and I don't think there should be a cap on permits in general. A last thing I want to say is, you know, the reason we wanted a short-term rental on the peninsula is because when we rent for vacations, I look for something that's family-friendly for a way of life. And the property management company we look at, oh, well, I'll cut it there. But just name to a face, I disagree with the cap.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yelena Tam. I am a resident of Newport Beach. I've lived here with my family for about 10 years now, 11. And I am also a short-term vacation rental management company. I own one. I own a small company with about, with about 12 employees, and we manage about 70 units. Most are in Coachella Valley. We only manage two properties on Balboa Island. I also want to add that I am currently an active member of the ad hoc short-term vacation rental committee of the city of La Quinta. We are dealing with all the issues the city is dealing with. And although I only have two units that I manage here, because I live here, these are really important issues to me. Just because I look at the numbers from other cities, and I am actively a member of the other short-term ad hoc committee, I do want to say the three-day minimum, I don't love it, but I understand it, and it's not such a big impact. The permit restriction is a huge impact. I've heard council members discuss a lot about recovering the economy, supporting small business. This is not the time, if you want to do that, to put any limits on new short-term permits. This is not only small business, most of us are small businesses, that just exist on its own. It's a small business that supports other small businesses. It's a small business that brings traffic to literally every other business that you can think of in Newport Beach. So from my standpoint, the three-day minimum, I don't love it. I will accept it, think it's somewhat reasonable. A cap on the permit, it's not the time to do it. I would let first phase one play out, see where you are with that, with the results, with enforcement, see how that goes before you even consider phase two. And if you must, must go to the permit restriction, there needs to be a much higher number than 1550. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor and council members. By means of introduction, I'm Meg Cooper. I'm an owner of a short-term rental on Newport Island. I also live on-site with my partner in the, in the back unit. I'd like to just address two quick points today, one on minimum stays, one on noise violations. On minimum stays, we've heard a lot tonight, and we'll probably hear more, about lost revenue for ourselves, our mortgages, our property taxes that we based our purchase decision off of. But the property taxes, the city's income from that, the bars and restaurants income from that, I could go on and on. But I'd like to take another angle, our neighbors. Newport Beach does not turn its back on its neighbors. I saw an article about it today with our fire department. The long weekend, just to give you an example, the long weekend rental I had in this weekend, I got to talking to them because they pulled in the garage with like three paddleboards, a kayak, about three bikes. I was a little concerned they were, they were moving in. They were from Irvine. This was their big vacation. They have parents, three kids, all in high school. They've been taking this vacation every year since their kids were, quote, "this little." Taking this opportunity away from them, it's just not fair. It's not fair to our neighbors, and it's, it's not fair, it's not fair to us as homeowners. Now, are there, you know, parties? Yes, of course. I live, I've lived on the peninsula for eight years. But these blanket approaches to knock them out not only hurt us, but they hurt our neighbors. And Newport Beach does not turn its back on its neighbors. Secondly, on noise, listen, I understand, fair and equal fines for noise violations, but let's talk about consistency across Newport Beach. I have never once had a noise violation. Granted, I hired Seabreeze Vacation Rentals, they have a super-high bar, no tolerance, none of that, because I'm, I work full-time, I didn't want to deal with it. They deal with it very well. But on a personal story, I have a serial abuser of his wife and children that lives in the house directly behind mine. The police have been called over 150 times this year. This has been going on for over 15 years, to which I've been told we're working on it. And we are. There's, there are steps that are being taken. But this has been a 15-year journey. This is damaging to my family. It's damaging to the work that I now do from home because of COVID, and it's damaging to the small business that I'm trying to get going in my front unit as a short-term rental. So this is just one example. I have a parrot next door, I'm not even joking. I can't even tell you how many times it says hello, it's a joke on my Zoom calls. I have a very affluent neighbor who's a homeowner, as is the serial abuser of his children and wife. And he had a massive blowout. And I mean, it happens, there's ebbs and flows. We live on the beach, that does happen. So I'm all for noise violations, 100% behind it. Like I said, I've never had one, but I think they should be applied consistently across Newport Beach, whether they're short-term renters, homeowners, or long-term rentals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. My mic on in there? Just checking, is, can everybody hear me in there? They can? Okay. So what we're going to do if, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and city council persons. Thank you for taking such an interest in this very important issue here in the city of Newport Beach. I, along with a number of my cohorts here, have properties that we own, manage, or live in here in Newport Beach. It is a family, it is a community that has been very favorite of so many people for so many years as a place for people to enjoy, to rent. I really believe that you need to do phase one, which came about pretty much because of COVID, and let this play out a little bit before phase two is even considered. I mean, give us a break and let us try to live these rules first. And as so many have spoken, especially the lady before me, apply the rules consistently across the board, whether they are short-term rentals, long-term renters, people just walking down the boardwalk, just implement the rules that we have currently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Tanner, Newport Beach resident. I think as you've heard over the months where you've been studying this problem, there are good short-term rental people and there are not-so-good short-term rental people. And we're here trying to figure out a solution that works for Newport Beach. So it's my opinion that short-term rentals need to have some controls. What those are, you'll figure out. I think we should wait and see what the city of Laguna Beach's outcome is with the Coastal Commission, because the Coastal Commission will be reviewing what Newport Beach proposes. So I think that's something. And I recall in the discussions of Laguna Beach that the Coastal Commission talked about requiring affordability. Don't know if they're going to or not, but if they are, one of the things that the city of Newport Beach could do, one of the ways they could achieve this, is to spread these units out over the city in some form, basically so they're all not lumped in one area. Seems to be that would be something to consider. Also, I think that in these changing times, that units, residential units with accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units, they should be looked at, whether they're going to be allowed to be short-term rentals or not. That's something I think you need to look at. I think it's taken for granted that these short-term lodging units should meet current building codes. They should be inspect, subject to inspection by the fire department. And I think importantly, because in many of these areas where these short-term lodging units occur, there are parking problems. I think that the short-term lodging units should use all garage and parking spaces on-site so that they don't impact the surrounding community. And I also think that under certain conditions, the permits for short-term lodging should be appealable by the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gaila Willner, and I am a short-term rental property owner. I want to echo some of the sentiment that you let phase one please play out before you consider adding any new restrictions. My concern is that if you do put a cap on the short-term rental permits, you're going to end up with a lot more nine-month rentals to college students. And I think that will give, bring more noise complaints, more parking issues, more trash than the short-term families that come and enjoy our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Lori Hamel. I've spoken a few times on this matter, one at city council and another planning commission. I oppose the minimum number of nights. I have a one-bedroom in Crona del Mar at the back of my house, and the economics don't work when I have to block out the two nights or one night that are not consecutive. I rent to responsible people. Many are business travelers or a couple just wanting to come to Newport Beach for the weekend, celebrate anniversary, something like that. I had this right to rent for one night when I bought the property and when I got the permit, and up until the emergency order. And there's no justification or evidence to take it away. I've had no violations. There's no proof that one-night rentals cause more issues or more noise violations than any other number of nights. It's just an arbitrary number that you've come up with. I propose you let violations and people that have issues with their permits to lose their permits and let the people that have responsible renters continue to rent what they feel is the right person for their rental unit for the right number of nights. And I'd also like to see an economic impact report on all these proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is, sorry, my name is Jolene Capirelli. 16 years ago, my husband and I brought our children, and we rented an Airbnb here on Newport Beach. We fell in love with it. We came so often that we became lifelong friends with the owner. And he decided to sell. And so we looked at each other, and we decided to throw our retirement plans away. And we bought a home here in Newport Beach. We have a duplex. We found the absolute best property manager we could, Beachview. And after interviewing at least five or six companies, that's who we decided upon. They do a magnificent job. We decided personally that we would not rent to anyone under 30. We've never had a complaint. We don't have issues. What I'd like to say to you is, for us to be here, we weren't born asters. We're hard-working, average people. We emptied out our savings account. We emptied out our IRA. We paid the horrible penalty just to be owners of Newport Beach. We love it. We support it. My husband goes by the house at least four times a day. We're totally engaged with our neighborhood, our neighbors, our tenants, our property management. What I'd like to say is, I understand there's a few really squeaky wheels in council, out of council, they're squeaky wheels. I understand everybody has a right to the opinion. What I'd like to say is, please protect my rights. Please protect my retirement. We worked really hard to do it. We bought the house, then we remodeled the house. That was another $300,000, $400,000 after we purchased. So what I'd like to say is, protect all of us, think about what you're doing, don't just penalize us for the bad actors that are out there. Again, go after the ones with the noise complaints, not the ones that have never had a complaint. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ken Rosson. I'm in Newport Beach Peninsula. I'm a Newport Beach Peninsula resident, 29 years, and a short-term lodging owner. I would like to ask the city, you've now, in Regulation 202015, put the rules in place to give you the ability to enforce short-term lodging. And coming up this 30th of October, you have permit renewals for all short-term lodging owners, is my understanding. Like one gentleman here suggested, I would like you to finally put some teeth into your actions, and as they go, as these owners go to apply for their permit, you make them live up to the rules that have now been passed. You review it, you make sure their property is adequate, and move forward. Do not allow permits for owners who do not have units that comply with the rules. The other thing I'd like to just point out, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, where the Planning Commission voted down against the Phase Two items that were being discussed, and I heard some of the reasons why, and they made it clear, you have 1,510 active units and only 87 complaints that year. You know, we have a complaint issue? I don't think so. What we have is the inability to record the number of complaints that are coming in. So what I'd like to see, and it still hasn't happened, we approved in 202015 that current, I guess we call that an addendum to our laws, the ability to have a 24-hour service. And here we are still, in September, and we approved that, what, back in April, May, June? And we still don't have that in service. So Mayor, I'd like to ask you, since you head up our city, to please do whatever you can to enforce that that 24-hour service does get put into action by the 1st of October, which was stated here tonight. I look forward to, as an operator, for us to have the ability to police not only ourselves, but police those other people out there that are doing short-term rentals, and call in on this service so you can finally have the data to understand who is breaking the rules and regulations so you can pull their permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Can folks hear me in there? Just make, just checking. All right, any other speakers in there?
So, good morning, council members and staff. First, I want to say thank you for, I hear the library is opening, is that true? So, so I'm here to talk about a related topic to short-term lodging. I live on Delia Avenue, and there are two drug and alcohol rehabs which operate next door to me. They have similar characteristics to short-term lodging, but the challenge is that we don't necessarily have the opportunities for enforcement. So in 2010, the city created an agreement with Morningside Recovery for operating agreement, and kind of the approach was, we're good. But unfortunately, for those of us who live next to facilities, we are still dealing with operators, such as I do, who do not follow the city-state and local codes related to their operation. So, for example, the operator next door to me agreed in 2012 to multiple conditions, and these conditions in the county of Orange were no loud conversations, no smoking, no parking in front of the property or on the street, no group therapy meetings outside, and to have a dedicated contact phone. This was in 2012. Within six months, the dedicated phone number was gone, and immediate, within six months, the violations of all of those conditions, which are outlined here and attached by the operator to his license at the state of California, were not being followed. So what I'm here to ask the city to do is, in the same vein as it pursues a balance between the short-term licenses and working with state regulations and city and county regulations, is to help us work with the state licensing agency to attach these conditions and all violation with the state of California Department of Healthcare Services. Because, for example, we, last week, a gentleman was sitting on the porch explaining to his family that he should come here from Vermont because the weather's nice and his methadone is working now. So we hear the drug treatment, we hear people swearing at us, we hear people using foul language constantly, and it's similar to living next door to a rehab. And an operator is required to comply by city and state regulations, which relate to his license. So Costa Mesa and Laguna also have an interest because they have this operator in his, in their cities, and the state is interested in enforcing. In 2016, we had an oper, 2014, we had an opportunity to enforce and have this operator lose his license. He actually did lose his license, and we had the opportunity to enforce, and we didn't take that vigorously. And so now we have this operator again, with 12 people living in four, six bedrooms, and really impacting the character of the neighborhood and the life quality of the residents. So what I'm here to ask the council for, the council members, many of them are familiar with this topic. It's a very complex topic. I personally have spent a lot of time and effort researching the license and understanding what the city, what the state's licensing practices have been. So I'm asking the council to support that we work with the state to enforce vigorously. The director of licensing is Christopher Lewis, his information is in the documentation which has been provided to the city in the past.
All right.
So we thank you for your support.
Thank you, Laura. All right, before we go to the phones, any other speakers in the community room? All right.
My name is Frank Capirelli. I just have one thing, you had mentioned at the beginning, you're gonna create the phone number, and with that phone number, you're going to judge how vacation rentals are doing.
Could you?
I live in the neighborhood, and I also have a weekly rental there. The problems I have in my neighborhood are actually the people that live there. As long as that phone number accurately counts, if it's a weekly vacation rental or a neighborhood person, I'd be okay with that, because I would stand my house against any of the people that live there. It's as quiet as any of them.
Okay, so are there any other speakers in the community room before we go to the phones? Okay, all right, we're gonna go to the phones then.
As long as that phone number-
All right, so you're gonna wanna mute what you're listening to, and then you can go ahead and speak.
............ neighborhood person.
Yeah, you need, there you go. All right, go ahead. They hung up. Okay, next speaker?
Hi, my name's Sue Reed, and I would like to first comment regarding the nuisance plan Phase One. I'd like to ask the council to reconsider the requirement to have a separate person besides the owner designated to be on call 24/7. I've owned a home in Newport for 19 years, and I have a short-term lodging permit. I've never had a complaint. I only rent four to five times a year to people I know, and I keep the permit because I feel it's the legal and right thing to do. I do not advertise, and I do not need a property manager. To be asked to name a person, be available 24/7 instead of having me called first, seems counterproductive. A scenario would be, there's a problem, the 24/7 person is called. If they happen to be reached, what are they supposed to do? Most likely, they would call me. It seems more reasonable to call me first. If I'm unable to get there in a timely fashion, then allow me to contact one of several neighbors until I find someone who is available to respond immediately, until I'm able to get there. Having to be within 25 miles or 30 minutes to respond by even an on-call neighbor will not necessarily be workable 24/7. There isn't anybody, with the exception of possibly a property manager, that is available 24/7, 365 days a year. I think this is an unreasonable requirement to have a short-term lodging permit, and I ask you to reconsider this. To require a single person to be designated instead of letting the owner contact someone is the reason I'm bringing this up, that's specifically. I also want to secondly say that I too would prefer no minimum cap on the nights that we rent. We have several renters that want to just come for a weekend, and it allows them to be able to do that. When you start putting six-night caps and things like that on there, you can't have friends or people come for a short-term time, and I don't think that's the way to go. I'd prefer to see no minimum cap on nights. And again, I agree, I don't think that the people that have had no complaints in 19 years are the ones that we should be targeting here. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Take the next call. Hi, go ahead.
Hello, this is Scott McFetters on Newport Island, and I was calling in mainly about discussing enforcement on how it currently works, since these ordinances have been passed. There's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that, that just because an ordinance gets passed, doesn't mean it's easy to enforce if people are getting citations right away. There's a lot of delay, and there's a lot of agony trying to get rid of or deal with the problem, operators and owners that don't care. And I'm talking specifically on Newport Island in the Channel area, where we have an advance day that's been an ongoing issue since they've been here for a year or so. And basically, basically, from lying on the short-term rental application saying how many bedrooms it has, square footage probably, other things like that, that the city will not do anything about because of COVID, so they won't do inspections, they won't go back to the old city records to see how many bedrooms the house was, or whatever. So that's an issue, and the ordinance says they should be, it should be, the permit should be taken away if they're doing that, but it doesn't seem like the city wants to enforce that part right now. I have no idea why. Noise, it's still the neighbors have to call the police, then they have to have, make sure code enforcement gets involved, make sure they get the address, and that the police actually put the address where the, where the noise is coming from. Otherwise, it just says like 38, 100 channel or whatever, and then the short-term rental doesn't get in trouble for it. Illegal parking, it never seems to go away. We had three different cars at one short-term rental this weekend parked illegally across the sidewalk, three different cars. I have no idea if the police cited them or if code enforcement cited them. But those, those, when they're parking in the fire lanes and across the sidewalk, it makes it really dangerous, and it's ongoing, and those should be counted against the permits when they do that. That's just an ongoing problem, and it's for certain properties, and they shouldn't be short-term rentals if they can't, if they're in a fire lane and they don't have the parking to support it. Four-day minimums, we've had multiple, it sounds like this is like a big deal, four-day, three-day, four days on Newport Island. We've had multiple occasions where people have violated that. They had an advance day, whoever it might be, they have people there for one day, two days, and what happens, what people don't know, is that the code enforcement has to witness it in order to cite somebody. So if somebody leaves in three days and they're gone, code enforcement won't cite them. So people have been getting away with a lot because code enforcement has to see it, has to witness it. Pictures aren't good enough, videos aren't good enough, eyewitnesses aren't good enough. So I think everybody should get together on this and get rid of the bad actors, because it's just ongoing issues. Trash violations, if you call on a short-term rental for trash violations-
All right.
-it's another week after the notice.
Go ahead and finish up quickly, Scott.
So, yeah, I appreciate it. So occupancies, another issue. The code enforcement now-
I was serious about, I was serious about quickly, Scott.
Okay, yeah, well, occupancy needs to be looked at, because you could have 15 people in a 3,000-square-foot house. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have the next speaker, please. Hi, go ahead.
Hi there, good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Craig Wallace, and my wife has a short-term rental in Corona del Mar. And I'm gonna urge council to halt this next phase, some of the other speakers have said the same thing, until we've had a chance to see what the new regulations are doing and seeing whether we have a problem. And I'm gonna make three points on that. First of all, I would urge council to act on evidence and not fear mongering, and I believe there is quite a, there's a potential for fear mongering to have a big impact here. Second is to, not to apply solutions to problems that don't exist for most short-term rentals, and to tighten the screws on all short-term rentals as a result of a few problem areas. And thirdly, to just keep some perspective, there's a lot of talk about the burden of short-term rentals, but there has to be some recognition of the benefits. Now, I recognize that reasonable regulation of short-term rentals is necessary and desirable so that they are sustainable. Everybody wants this to get along, short, short-term rental landlords don't want to upset their neighbors, in fact, probably more so than long-term landlords, because if you get a long-term tenant in there, you walk away and you leave them in there for a year with very little interaction with them. Most short-term landlords, and certainly this is our case, were very involved. We have a professional manager, the manager checks on them, we make sure that they're comfortable, we make sure they're not causing a disturbance. And so I wanted to say that the tenor, one of the problems with, and this is why I say evidence is important, one of the problems, and I think the reason there are so many people upset about this, is that the, the tenor of the existing ordinances is overwhelmingly negative and, and seems to be blaming problems on short-term rentals that are really problems of a beach resort community. There are problems that Newport Beach has always had, it's got a specific geography that has limited parking, and if you read the, the preambles of the, the ordinance that have already been enacted, whereas this influx of tourists burdened city streets and services with heavy volume of vehicle traffic and heavy demand on parking, sewage, and refuge facilities, paramedics and police services, that's directly from the preamble of the ordinances, there isn't really no evidence, or at least I haven't seen it, that short-term rental units are any more to blame for those kinds of problems, which do exist, than other regular tenants or permanent residence landowners. So now what has happened, though, and the other reason that I think this is causing so much friction, is now there's a means to complain about this. There's gonna be a 24-hour answering service, there's a website, you can click on a button and make a complaint. You can't make those complaints about your regular neighbors, and so now we're gonna be collecting complaints. And so it looks like this is designed to make short-term rentals the evil that everybody wants to get rid of.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We have the next speaker. Hi, go ahead.
Yes, I'm Bud Reeveley from Newport Island. Lived here in the island since 95, when I built the house here. Prior to that, I lived over in the other section of town on 36th Street, and my wife and I decided that after having, rolling a few drunks away from our driveway, we started looking for another place to live. Fortunately, there was a spot here on the island that was available. We purchased it and built a single- We purchased it and built a single-family home here and have enjoyed it since that time. Probably my familiarity with Newport goes all the way back to my high school days in the late 40s. Unfortunately, I probably was one of the bad actors who came down here for Bow Week, so I apologize to you all for that. Well, we're kind of a unique little residential area, and that's why we're so anxious to keep it that way. We have our meetings here, barbecues, people bring their own food, and in the park, we have a spot where we can all gather together in the afternoons and evenings when we want to. And we know people that live on the island. There's only about 110 families here, and after you've been here a while, you can get to know most of them. We have kids, and dogs, and cats, and everything we love, and we're being damaged by some of the bad operators that we have on the island. My feeling about the cap is that we should remain at this number. And I'd like to know from the staff, when they went to other cities and found illegal units, no one has said there's any illegal units here. And I'd like that staff member, maybe he could comment on that? Has that ever been investigated? Find out what the real number of units is?
All right. Thank you very much. We have the next speaker. All right, go ahead.
Avvo Avadishian.
All right, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Avvo Avadishian, and I, like most of the other people that spoke, are against raising or increasing the minimum night stay. My story started 10 years ago, and I was a short-term renter in Newport. And I remember when I came down there with my family, we just absolutely fell in love with the sunsets, with the quality of people there, and just, you know, dreamt to someday be a part of it. About two years ago is when I seriously had the means to afford to live in Newport and pulled together a lot of my savings and found a location eventually. And in January of this year, we were fortunate enough to buy a house on Oceanfront. And it's been a dream for us, and I'll tell you, we looked for a short-term rental specifically. Had we known that there was any type of jeopardy to come from our short-term rental, understanding that that certainly would have weighed heavily on our decision of purchasing a home in Newport. And more specifically, we made sure that it was a short-term rental because some of the other homes that don't have that permit was, we had opportunities to buy those but paid a hefty premium for the short-term rentals. So we value that very much. During the COVID lockdown, since we couldn't rent out our house, we ended up staying there. And really quickly, what we found out was, just like us 10 years ago, that people that come there on a short-term basis aren't there to cause trouble. They're there for a finite period of time, and they want to enjoy peacefully, you know, every, you know, day that they have there. What I also noticed was, in my surrounding area, I think I'm the only short-term renter on Oceanfront, but the homes nearby were, had people staying in there even during the lockdown period for a week at a time. So I don't believe the long-term renter homes are properly being scrutinized for a short-term rental basis. I think that's where some of the problems could be sort of fixed by regulating those homes. And, you know, it will reduce volume, and volume should reduce some of the distractions that we've had complaints about. To conclude, I would just echo with some of the other speakers, I haven't seen any short-term complaints in the surrounding homes, and my management company, Beachview, has done a great job, and we haven't violated a single rule that the city is enforcing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Just, how many more? Four? Okay. All right, go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name is Jacqueline Whitmire. My husband and I own a duplex in Corona del Mar, and we live in one of the units. We rent to long-term tenants and do not agree that short-term rentals should be in Corona del Mar. These are vacation rentals that are living closely to long-term residents. The short-term rentals have people in vacation mode, not having to get up and go to work in the morning, like we do. Our incomes have been adversely affected by living next door to a short-term rental. We also need to pay our mortgage, and our property taxes, and our utilities. I was disappointed listening to the Planning Commission that regarded the income of short-term rentals and showed no respect to those of us that rent to long-term tenants. I am hoping that you will consider that I also need income, and I rely on my rental for that income. I have had prospective tenants turn away because they do not want to live next door to these vacation homes. Why would you consider the income of the short-term rentals over the long-term rentals? I do not think the three-day minimum is long enough, but it is much more reasonable than one or two nights that just creates party homes. I can tell you that frequent turnover is very disruptive. I have lived next door to it. As a good neighbor and a good city resident, I did not call the police to complain. My mistake. Please consider the lifestyle of Corona del Mar and respect the residents who want to live here in peace and harmony. I am also concerned about my property value, which is negatively affected by the loss of income because these short-term rentals make it difficult for me to rent my unit. As a realtor, I know that these noisy neighbors and this disruption is costing me money in monthly income and in property value. Thank you for your consideration and your, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
I'm here in peace.
I need you to mute what you're listening to. All right, then go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
My name is Carol McDermott, and I am requesting additional time because I'm representing four other speakers, potential, or four clients.
Yeah, those speakers had reached out to me and asked, and that seemed, that's reasonable, Carol, so how much time do you need?
About nine minutes. And I will speak quickly.
All right, go ahead.
So good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council and staff. My name is Carol McDermott, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you regarding this important issue to my clients, Burwhite Realty, Alboa Vacation Rentals, Seabreeze Vacation Rentals, Abrams Coastal Properties, and the hundreds of homeowners whose short-term rentals are managed by these fine firms. I basically made this presentation last week to the Ad-Hoc Committee and staff, who have worked so very hard on this issue, but felt it was important to also address the entire council. I understand the stated goal of the Ad-Hoc Committee, as you formed it, is to develop a short-term lodging code that balances the quality of life needs of the residents with the needs of the property owners, balances that quality of life with the needs of both residents and property owners, some of which are one and the same. We realize that it's been a challenge to the Ad-Hoc Committee and the staff that's been laboring over this issue for some time, but we feel that the standards of Phase One, and particularly those being considered and regulated in the proposed Phase Two ordinance, are clearly designed to diminish short-term lodging, as has existed in Newport Beach for over 100 years. Of note is that the Planning Commission, which the council needs to help review and make recommendations on regulations that can be approved by the Coastal Commission, voted to deny the Phase Two regulations. When visiting Newport Beach, while visiting Newport Beach has a large budget to promote and encourage visitors to book hotels and short-term lodging, the findings of the proposed Phase Two are misleading and unfair in describing all tourists, including short-term lodging guests, as burdens, particularly when considering the more relevant and huge impact of the eight to 10 million daily beach visitors who do tax city services and take up all the parking, while short-term lodging generates revenue to the city. It's also important to note that it's unfair to compare Newport Beach with the other coastal cities, which do not have the miles of coastal and bay frontage on the peninsula, where there are 16,824 dwellings and only 1,510, apparently, are short-term rentals in the entire city. We request the consideration of Phase Two ordinance be postponed for the following reasons. One, there has not been enough time to figure out how the regulations of Phase One are working to address the concerns of some adjacent long-term residents. Two, there is no longer a need to rush this as the summer season is now over. And three, there is plenty of time to hash out the fine points of these important regulations. However, we do wish to comment as follows. As you know, these regulations must be approved by the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission has determined that short-term rentals are a permitted right, as stated in the letter to the city of San Diego, and I quote, "Coastal Commission Agency has generally interpreted local zoning ordinance in a broad fashion and found that short-term rentals or vacation rentals are a form of residential use permitted by right in any residentially zoned area unless other such uses are specifically prohibited." Minimum night stay. The Subcommittee agreed, and we support a three-night minimum, which the Coastal Commission has agreed to in San Diego, Del Mar, and other cities, and it can be sensitive to neighborhood concerns while still affording important coastal visitor access. The freeze, the current freeze was established at the beginning of the COVID-19 shutdown, supposedly to prevent crowding. However, what it did was it forced visitors into hotels in even smaller, more crowded situations while preventing a new owner of a home previously used for short-term lodging was eligible to apply for a new permit from obtaining a permit. We strongly oppose the further extensions of these regulations citywide by the proposed upcoming changes to Chapter 5.95. Additionally, it should be noted that the freeze prevents the owner of a single-family residence proposing to tear down, rebuild, from keeping their existing permit, as we understand it, resulting in significant loss of revenue enhancements to the city, a provision we strongly oppose as well. Please lift the freeze as summer is over and there's no longer an influx of tourists or guests. On the proposed cap, it is problematic in many ways in that it reduces coastal access and will reduce the TOT generated by the city, for the city. And notice that the Coastal Commission has resisted approving any caps, so there needs to be other solutions. It also does not address the inactive permits nor describe the mechanism for acquiring a new permit as inactive permits expire. That's an important feature here, and it could allow an inactive permit holder to pay the city only $100 a year to keep the permit active but not rent the unit and not generate any revenue for the city. We strongly oppose a cap. And there is apparently some number released tonight that we have not seen before. However, so rather than an artificial cap, we have a suggestion. We would like you to consider a different process for allowing new permits to be issued, but with a requirement that a minimum of $1,000 of annual TOT to be paid by the city by the permit holder. Instituting a minimum annual $1,000 TOT requirement to be paid by all existing permit holders will eliminate inactive permits, reducing the actual number of permits. That's your opportunity to reduce the permits while giving the city a more realistic number of active short-term lodgings and continue an enhanced revenue stream generated by this important segment of the community. Let's let the marketplace decide how many permits are issued, and if the total number of permits increases beyond a certain limit, then the city has the opportunity to raise the minimum TOT requirement for each permit but not institute a cap. Caps and blanket prohibitions have, as I've said, have been found to be inconsistent with the Coastal Act and violates the broad mandate to maximize coastal access and provide affordable accommodations. The Coastal Commission has further defended the policy providing these accommodations in the coastal zone. And on the peninsula, there are 16,824 dwellings on the oceanfront, steps to the ocean or bay. It's the only city and county which affords such, provides such affordability for people to stay at the beach. Of those 16,824 dwellings on the peninsula, the percentage of short-term lodging permits comprise only 7% of the peninsula dwellings, hardly an overwhelming number disruptive of the peninsula-beach community, which also includes numerous long-term rentals, as many people have pointed out in their testimonies tonight. The nuisance response plan is not currently well-defined, and we think must be explained more clearly. And we, the neighborhood, the good neighbor policy is also something we can support but needs further clarification. But we have a proposal for you. What we suggest is that both the nuisance response plan and the good neighbor policy provisions be addressed by a well-crafted short-term lodging guest contract, which addresses both the nuisance and the good neighbor policies by allowing and requiring the permit holder to immediately evict non-compliant guests. The Burwhite contract does just that and has been forwarded to staff as a result of our conversations with the Ad-Hoc Committee last week, and it addresses both issues, and if used as a suggested template for all permit holders, could qualify as satisfying the requirement of a nuisance response plan and the good neighbor policy without having any confusion about what is required. We also require, request edits of the Phase One ordinances follows. The minimum age to rent a short-term lodging should be 25, not 21. That's the same age as required for renting a car. The local contact person, we recommend that be located within five miles, not 25 miles. We believe that helps the city provide a faster response time in the event of violations. In terms of the violations, penalties, and revocation provisions should be based on the issuance of clearly defined standards for issuing disturbance advisory cards, called a DAC or LUGO, rather than the, allow the revocation of a permit on the basis of a minor violation or as a result of a single NIMBY or crank collar, which can screw the record when there is no clear-cut violation for a DAC or any minor code violation such as leaving the trash out a few hours beyond the limit. We ask for clarification there. In terms of parking requirements, a minimum one space per property is acceptable and in fact is demanded by the short-term lodging guests. However, further parking standards, if any, in the Phase Two ordinance must be clarified. Occupancy limits are also a bit of a problem, as defined in Phase Two, because they're based on-
Yeah, you've had a pretty good amount of time, so yeah, if you could finish quickly.
I need a couple more minutes.
No, I'm not going to be able to do that one, Carol. Nine was quite a bit already. Could you wrap it up?
Okay, well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and we would just ask that you consider the occupancy limit, and we're available. Craig Batley is in the community room and can respond to any questions that you may have on my presentation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carol. All right, next caller. Hi, I need you to mute what you're listening to and then go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Teresa Holloway. I am a short-term rental operator, brand new, and I agree with a lot of the other comments made by callers and personal speakers, but I wanted to, and I really liked what Carol McDermott just said, but I'd like to just give a little more personal information and remind this- remind the city council that not all owners are alike, and I think some of the other speakers, like the Cavarelli's, touched on this, but my situation is my sister and I bought a home with the intention of short-term renting it for a short period of time and then having our father, our elderly father, live there as his last residence. He lives in Spain, but he travels back and forth, and he has asked to die here in Newport Beach in his hometown. So without the income from the short-term rental, we wouldn't be able to afford this solution for him. And I'm hearing this from other speakers, too, that there are a lot of unique situations out there. I also agree that there should be an age limit in my brief time operating this short-term rental. I learned a lot, and I believe it should be 25 years or more. I believe that there should be a three-night minimum to eliminate partiers and weekend warriors. I think there should be a cap, although I'm not clear on that. I do agree with Craig Wallace that the language of the current ordinance, both phase one and phase two, is very negative and really only allows for negative input to the city council through the dedicated phone line. One thing that I haven't heard is maybe a proposal for a patrol or some type of private security that could monitor and help enforce some of these restrictions. And I'm starting to think, after listening to all the input, that maybe all the short-term, independent short-term renters and management companies should get together and form some type of an alliance. I know that there's already several alliances for neighbors, neighborhood groups, that are looking to eliminate short-term rentals. So I thank you so much for the opportunity for input, and I look forward to hearing your answers.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Just for timing purposes, how many more? Two more? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I need you to mute what you're listening to and then go ahead. Hi, my name is Pete Evans, and I operate a short-term rental property on the Little Island in Balboa. And I would appreciate if you did not extend the time required to be six days. The majority of the people I rent to, actually, they, variety of time periods, most people are three days, sometimes four, sometimes two weeks. But I myself and my wife vacation, and a typical vacation for us is once a week, we'll go some, once a year, we'll go somewhere for a week, but a lot of times, we go to other places for short periods of time, because everybody works so hard these days, where, you know, you have an iPhone, a computer, you're working 24/7, and we can't afford to go and take multiple weeks off, and so we go for two, three days. And so converting that to six days would be very harmful to me and my business, because a lot of people don't take weeks off, six days in October, in September, and May, and different months. They could do that in June, July, but not even August anymore, because schools have started earlier. So the three-day thing has not been hard for us to adapt, running our little business on Balboa Island. I think we're a good operator. We don't have any complaints, and I'd like you to keep it at just the three days if possible. Thank you so much. You're all doing a great job. Bye.
Thank you. All right, no more. Okay, last call in the community room. All right, we'll bring it back. Okay, we're going to start with Mr. Avery, and then we'll go to Ms. Dixon, and then Mr. Hurdman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if you pull back, at least what I think, I look back at this situation, which we've all been watching for a long time and talking about. You know, we're going through a housing revolution, you know, in this state, and it's certainly impacting us, and it's changing neighborhoods as we've known them. And the state is driving a lot of it. We're just seeing the tip of the iceberg right now, but where I live in an R1 neighborhood, you know, you can now put together a triplex, either in your existing home or build one. And the escalating property values and taxes force people to look for other sources of revenue, and I think that'll be increasingly the case, and people, to be able to keep their families in their homes, live where they want to live, are going to be forced more and more to find a way to help their own home drive revenue to support their lives in the place they want to live. And I think there's nothing wrong with that. It's just that it creates a lot of friction, and we're seeing that friction now, and it's not going to stop. And obviously, what we're talking about here is, and I've heard this word, that we're discriminating, or could be discriminating against STL operators with sort of code enforcement actions. And I don't think that's the case, could be the case, but my experience has been, even on my quiet little street, you know, there've been noise issues. And I think, obviously, the, a noise complaint is a noise complaint, doesn't matter where it comes from, and it needs to be, needs to be dealt with. And so I think it's, to me, it's sort of all about noise and parking and trash, and the other issues that we hear about are somewhat secondary. Parking is a close second. And, but the solution, we've heard many people talk about it here, and I've mentioned it before, is a robust and fair, equitable code enforcement operation. And it boils down to dollars, and so we, the city, I believe, needs to just invest more money in code enforcement people, more money in education. And we need people to respond when someone is feeling the pain of being in their home and they can't enjoy it, because everyone has the right, an eligible right, to enjoy, peacefully enjoy the quietness of their home, and they shouldn't be sitting there at 10 o'clock at night, just exasperated. On the other side, people should also, I think, be able to, under these, what's happening in this revolution, be able to monetize their homes, because quite frankly, it's just getting further and further away from regular folks to live near the beach unless they have some way of helping to pay for their property. So I think also, we've shown we can do that, we can do code enforcement, we can run an operation, and that was the 2011 LUGO ordinance, and we had a real problem in a certain section of Newport Beach, up at the west end of the peninsula. And it was a remarkable turnaround that, between the police department, code enforcement, and a fine structure, we were able to really go after the bad operators. I've always felt that the majority of short-term rental operators, the vast majority, and of the rental owners, rental operators, are good operators. They care about their properties, they care about their renters, and they care about their neighbors. But we really need to work on the bad operators, people who are not paying much attention to their properties and just letting things roll. And so that's what we, I believe, we need to focus on. And we've shown we can do it, and I think we need to do it again, not just for, not just for neighborhoods with STLs, but all neighborhoods, because our whole society is becoming louder. Cars are louder, people are customizing their tailpipes and making lots of noise on PCH. I've gotten lots of complaints about that. Just people feel more empowered to affect the lives of others through the noise they create, and it's wrong, and we need to help neighbors deal with this. And neighbors need to get together and form their own peaceful solutions to the problem. So we just let every, everybody's got to know what our expectations are, and we've got to be serious about it. And certainly, the city has a role in that, we have an important role in that, and we need to support it. And we're obviously getting a lot of income from the STLs and these rental operations, and we need to just put more effort, more money into code enforcement that is not going after people, but educating, and then if we need to, put enough bite on a penalty where it makes a difference. And finally, I'll say that the person that's responsible for all this, when it happens, is the owner. The owner cannot discharge their responsibilities, so if they are having a problem and they've got multiple citations, they need to maybe get a different real estate agent who's managing it. So, but the buck's got to stop somewhere. It has to stop with the owners of the houses, the, or the STLs, or even party boats on Newport Harbor. It's the same thing. It's the owners that need to be responsible for their operations. They're operating in our city, they're making income, and we, that's totally appropriate, it's fine, but it's unfair to the good operators to get tarred by the bad ones. And so one of our important roles is to help STL operators, people that rent by the month, and homeowners by having enough code enforcement to make a difference. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that this is a study session, so we're not taking any final action today, but we will be ultimately making recommendations based on consensus to the staff. But I do want to clarify a few items. Mr. Juerges, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. You talked about the Planning Commission and its action, I guess it was late July. I watched the meeting, and my sense was that it was a different experience, listening to the Planning Commission versus our ad hoc committee and the number of meetings that we've had at study sessions and city councils, where we have brought the community and the council members along to understand the situation as it exists in Newport Beach. My sense, when I was viewing the Planning Commission, there wasn't really a full, in my opinion, wasn't a full understanding of the total scope and depth and breadth of the circumstances that we're dealing with. And so consequently, they voted not on policy, but just on, because it was a procedural requirement that they vote on this, but I don't know if they really fully understood what we're dealing with in the community.
No, I would agree with you, Councilmember Dixon. You know, it was just one meeting, one hearing. They haven't spent the 18 months, as the ad hoc committee has, on the subject, talking to residents. It was just more of a technical issue for them, so, you know, it's one meeting that they just couldn't wrap their arms around it. I think definitely, if we spent more time with the Planning Commission, they would, I would say, come around, but that's my personal view. But I would agree, they didn't spend enough time understanding all the backstory on short-term lodging.
And in terms of process and procedure, just to clarify for everyone's edification, we have kind of gone into this nomenclature, phase one, which we passed with the new ordinance a few months ago, and phase two, but really, it's all part of the ad hoc, we were all looking at all these changes, and we separated, with staff's recommendation, separated those items of improvements that did not require coastal commission approval. So that's why we brought this before council, the ad hoc committee brought it before council. And then now, the second Part 1B, frankly, it's how I interpret it, is that those two aspects, the requirement regarding the night stay and the potential cap, are the two matters that will ultimately go to the coastal commission. Is that correct? So many people we've heard today talk about, let's let these first Part 1 be implemented, but I believe, as we'll hear in our discussion, that it's really taken in the totality of how we can manage short-term rentals in our community. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, from a staff's standpoint, we recommend it to bifurcate the whole, the ordinances to those that do not have coastal, do not need coastal approval, and then to those that would need coastal approval. So we've completed that first part of it, and now we have those elements that we believe coastal will have to review, but we think there'll be support from the coastal commission. We understand they'll scrutinize it, but, you know, we, from Newport Beach, we have the most short-term lodging of any coastal city of our size, so we think there's going to be support from coastal commission's standpoint, if this item were to move forward.
Right. Now, one of the speakers mentioned that the coastal commission has ruled that a permit is a property right. Could you please talk about that? Or maybe Mr. City Attorney, if you want to, is, I think we, and this was an issue that came up before the Planning Commission, I think we need to clarify once and for all. Is a short-term rental permit a property right? Yes or no?
So I'm not familiar with what coastal commission's looking at from a property right standpoint, but from the city of Newport Beach, you know, Newport Beach has a permit program. It's in our code, it says you shall obtain a permit. So, and for that permit, there are conditions which the council has adopted and implemented. So it's a conditional permit to operate short-term lodging. It is not a property right. The council can withdraw and take away that permit from the code and not allow short-term lodging to occur. Huntington Beach does not allow short-term lodging. It's not a permitted use. So again, short-term lodging is not a property right.
Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct, Councilmember Dixon. It's an annual permit, so it doesn't vest the person who has one with any type of property right, and what they have is an annual permit that can basically be withdrawn.
But a long-term rental agreement is a property right? Is that my correct understanding?
A long-term rental agreement?
Yes, more than 30 days.
Yes, well, people have, if you have a lease or some type of rental agreement for over 30 days, then you acquire a property right.
Yes, that's different. Many people this evening have talked about their current, that their current renters or rental companies or rental owners, property owners, and first, let me just say that we're trying to find peace in our community, between the residents and the property owners and/or property management companies. There's no desire by anyone, have I heard anyone say, we want to put an end to short-term rentals? That is, short-term rentals are part of our institutional history, the life in Newport Beach. Short-term rentals are a good thing. We're trying to find a path forward to maintain the quality of life in the neighborhoods where these, the really commercial entities are operating within a neighborhood. I just want to clarify for the people who have spoken this evening, that, who are short-term rental property owners, that they think that their permit is going to be taken away. Even with the proposed concept of a cap, whatever that number may be, it is never our desire to eliminate the permit or take away a permit that someone already has, as long as they're paying the fees and the necessary renewals and that type of thing. So just to be clear, for everyone as understanding, who is a current short-term rental property owner or who owns a, possesses a permit, that permit will not be taken away. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's no recommendation to take any permit away from anybody.
Let's talk about enforcement for a moment. We've heard a lot about it, we've gotten a lot of letters about enforcement. I know you're just getting, you and your staff are just getting up and getting these systems, new procedures organized, but at the end of the day, do you think we could do more enforcement and be more responsive to the property owners who actually are seeking help and dealing with peace and quiet in their neighborhoods?
I think that's definitely the goal. We've just started implementing this new ordinance. We want to see how that plays out. We're coming off this peak season. You know, for us, we're a reactive program, so we do need people to call code enforcement to let us know there are issues and there are complaints. I understand from one of the residents, you know, we don't accept photos, we don't accept photos for everything. There are some limited items, we can't accept photos. This 24-hour hotline that we're going to roll out here at the end of the month, I believe that's really important for us, because that is going to start tracking data, that's going to help us track data. Right now, if there are late-night activities, there's loud noises, I've talked to the police chief, you know, we encourage people to reach out to the police department. We don't have code enforcement in the evening hours right now. So we do encourage, if there are complaints, to reach out to the police department, and the police department will respond. We will have this hotline up and running here at the end of the month, and we can start tracking data better. From there, we have, we'll have a better assessment of how much complaints we have, and that we can actually come back to the city council with, if the council wants a more robust code enforcement plan, we'll have the data to support that.
So just to echo on what you're saying, it was really much to my surprise, as we've gone into this, to wonder why aren't there more recorded incidents of complaints? But we did not have a code provision in the municipal code, so there is nothing to cite anyone for violating a code, so that's why the records were not there. So with the new code and requirements, that should produce the necessary feedback, that is certainly informative. But we've heard only, well, the vast majority of speakers today are the property owners, so they're not going to be affected by this. If they maintain their good operations, life will continue. So no one's going to be affected who spoke today that said, "Don't take my permit away," because that's not going to happen unless they don't fulfill the requirements of the permit. But it's the enforcement, now that we have a code, that people, residents, have a means to seek some remedy, some relief to their lost sleep and incursions into their peaceful existence that they, if they need to call. Couple other things of enforcement, three-day. Mr. Mosher mentioned a lottery system on the permits. What do you think about that? I hadn't thought about that. Just catching you by surprise on that. I know we haven't thought about it, but what's your thought?
I definitely would like to hear... I definitely would like to hear if the council has support for a cap, and what is that cap? And I think the residents that have a permit now, and that to force them into a lottery system where they potentially can lose that permit, I think that's troubling.
Okay. I do want to talk about something that Mr. Avery just brought up, and this is a real situation that all cities, whether they're coastal or otherwise, are going to be experiencing in California, because there are new state laws, and there are proposed legislation that may or may not be signed, or it'll come back next year, to significantly alter neighborhoods and single-family neighborhoods in all communities. What we have now, what California's state law now, that you cannot, a homeowner, a property owner, cannot scrape, demolish their home, and it cannot build, they cannot scrape a multi, what am I trying to say, an R2, like a duplex, and build a single-family home. So the stated wish of many in the legislature is to eliminate single-family residents. So we have to think as a council, as a city, the potential impact on many levels, and this is really general plan type of discussion, because what is going to happen to our city when a property owner can scrape a single-family resident and build, by right, build a multi-unit high-rise apartment building? That is coming, and they're trying to do it, and at least it's going to allow a duplex to be placed on, or a quadruplex to be placed on a single-family lot. We know that is happening. What we as a city need to think about in the future, because this is going to happen within the next year to two years, with a supermajority in the legislature of members who want to do this, how that affects not only our neighborhoods fundamentally, but short-term rentals. So we will be, the state is going to be creating in our very own city multiple new avenues for rentals, for short-term rentals. That's, and I don't have the answer for that, I just see that this train's going pretty fast down the station. Otherwise, also, another statewide issue, and I know you're on top of these issues related to affordable housing. We have our RENA numbers, we've all been talking about this, 4,800, 5,000 units we have to identify. This is going to be an interesting conflict between the California Coastal Commission and the governor, because the California Coastal Commission wants visitor-serving units. This is what a short-term rental is. The governor wants more housing. Every duplex that becomes a short-term rental removes that property from the housing stock. So we, as a city, need to be mindful that we have to come up with 4,900 identified lots for building housing, and if we are going to take, allow for the proliferation of short-term rentals without a cap, right now, we're at 1,500. Those properties are removed from our housing stock as potential rental apartments. So if we are going to allow this proliferation to occur, we are going to be trying to deal with this conflict. Where are we going to find the housing? We've already allowed them to permit it for short-term rentals. I don't have the answer for that, but we know that that train's coming also. So I'm just trying to be thoughtful of the future from a general plan standpoint, we just want to turn over all of our housing to short-term rentals when we're going to have to come up with actual livable housing. So those are conflicts. So thank you for that. You may sit down. Thank you so much. I just want to mention, oh, one more question. I think you have, over the last several years, your department has really identified and eliminated the illegal. Just to answer that question that was out there, you're saying we're not finding the illegal permits too much anymore?
Correct. The illegal units have dropped significantly. If we have any, I would say 10 to 20. It is recurring. We're on top of it. They do pop up every once in a while, but we've dramatically reduced the number of illegals in the city.
Well, that's very good. So just in conclusion, as we go forward, I do believe that the three, personally, that the three-night minimum, and it seems that the professional community agrees with that, would do a lot to eliminate the one-night events. I do continue to support a cap for this reason. This, as I stated a moment ago, our housing needs, short-term rentals take away our, take away the universe, the population of apartments that we are going to need to supply for affordable housing. I want short-term rentals to continue, the proliferation. In fact, we had a letter received this afternoon by a property owner who's a short-term rental owner, and he says, "Occupancy levels have more than quadrupled while services have not." That's a very important point. So in the last four years, with the online platforms, Airbnb, et cetera, that homes have been converted into short-term rentals, but our services, we can't even enforce what we have, and the police impacts, public safety impacts, we've never done any analysis. Someone mentioned an EIR. We should do an EIR also on looking at the impacts that we have in our community by having short-term rentals explode in our community. In fact, this owner has said that we now, there's a lot of, everybody is citing incidents, as they didn't speak tonight, but they have sent lots of letters, that there are more people that come, they exceed the occupancy capacity requirements, and we can't enforce that. So I will support the cap. It could be 1,500, 1,500 where we are, it could go to 1,600, but I think we have to get our arms around this before it's too late. So thank you for indulging me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll try and make this as brief as I can. We want this industry to continue to thrive in our city. It's over a 100-year-old tradition. It has never been the intent of the Short-Term Lodging Ad hoc Committee to eliminate this industry in our city. We want it to thrive, and we want it to continue. Mr. Mosher, placing a cap on short-term lodging permits, you say, or I believe you said, places, homes that have a permit at a greater value than homes that do not have a permit, I'd like to point out that if we don't place a cap on short-term lodging permits within the city, that the proliferation of short-term lodging permits in our neighborhoods and villages might in fact decrease the value of homes, because the proliferation of them may change the complexion of a village, or of a neighborhood, or of a street, to the point where it is not desirable to live on, because of the activity, or the inappropriate activity of too many STL permits concentrated in one area. And as far as a lottery system for permits, that's kind of akin to putting all mooring holders on an annual permit program. That would be very difficult for people to be able to manage in terms of the decision on whether or not to purchase a boat. If you don't, if you don't know that you have a place to moor it on an annual basis, it would be the same for short-term lodging permit holders. I do not consider, and I don't think anyone up here considers to be, short-term lodging a blight on our community at all, and I've already alluded to the reasons why. We want this industry, again, to continue to thrive in our city. As far as the claims that there's no evidence for the need for this committee to have been formed and to come up with amendments to the existing regulation, that just simply isn't the case. We would not have spent 18, this, first of all, had there not been complaints on the part of the community, the council would not have formed this ad hoc committee. And if we had not formed the ad hoc committee, we would have been irresponsible, as far as I'm concerned as a council, to not address this issue within our city and to regulate it. I want to say the same thing that Diane said. If you're a responsible STL permit holder, you're going to notice probably no change at all in the way you operate your business. The amended ordinance does add a couple of new requirements for you as a property owner and as a landlord, but if you're a responsible operator, like Mrs. Capirelli claims she is, and I'm sure she is, and from the hundreds of people that I have heard from in the last 36 hours in the form of email, again, you're not, you're going to notice absolutely, probably no difference at all. This boils down to a quality of life issue for the permanent residents in our city. They have a right to be listened to, and they have a right to expect some action on the part of this council when it comes to their quality of life. As far as the 24-hour contact person and being within a 25-mile distance, living within a 25-mile distance from the STL unit, you can be the person. You don't have to assign somebody to do that. You, the property owner, you, the landlord, can be the contact person, and if you don't, if you live further than 25 miles away, there will be a need for you to designate someone to be the responsible party to respond. Enforcement is pretty much at the bottom of almost every issue in this city that's related to ordinances. We recognize that, and with this program, we plan on doing something about it. I don't see the correlation between what everyone is referring to as Phase One and Phase Two. The only reason the cap and the minimum night's stay was pulled out, and Mrs. Dixon just pointed this out, was because there are issues that have to go before the Coastal Commission. There really isn't a Phase One and a Phase Two. We just separated these two issues out because they have to go to Coastal Commission. We've provided an additional opportunity tonight for input from the community and input from the council on these two issues, and hopefully by the end of the study session, we'll have some direction to provide staff on this. My particular position on this is that, yes, we do need a cap, and yes, we do need a minimum three-night stay requirement. Hold on just a minute, I'm sorry. What I see happening over a period of time is that the bad seeds, if you will, those units that are habitually a problem within our city, as a result of the new regulation, are just going to eliminate themselves, and they'll do that by having violations, by committing violations, having citations issued. There's a limit to the amount of citations that can be issued now, and they, they'll have their permit revoked, and I think just through that process, the bad units, I don't like the word "bad," excuse me, the units in our city that are not operating within the ordinance are just going to eliminate themselves. So those of you that are good, responsible people, as far as STL permits and property owners, you've got nothing to worry about with this new ordinance, absolutely nothing. You're going to be allowed to continue to operate as you have been, without any problems at all. Thank you.
Thank you. And real quick, before we get to Ms. Brenner, if you're tuning in right now for the six o'clock regular meeting, my guess is we'll probably start that at 6:30. So I just want everyone to know that if you're here for the regular meeting, it'll probably start at 6:30. All right, Ms. Brenner.
Okay, I'll try to not be any more repetitive than necessary, because my ad hoc committee colleagues have covered it very well, but I do want to emphasize that I think our Planning Commission was really put at a disadvantage by having to weigh in on this after a couple hours of testimony, because this has been a really extensive and exhaustive process that this ad hoc committee has gone through, and we have revised and changed and listened to, we've met with so many members of the community and the real estate community, and we've met with people that have problems and people that have suggestions for solutions. We have gone back and forth on suggested changes and said, "Okay, well, maybe that is too much. Let's pull back. If you think this is a more reasonable, then let's look at three days." You know, we don't have to have six days. So we really, the process has been really exhaustive, and we've been trying to balance the rights of the short-term lodging operators and the long-term owners and residents, and I think the long-term owners and residents get sort of lost in the process a lot of the time, because a lot of these people who've had their homes either a short term or a long term, they're banking on the income from their rental units as well. And so we hear a lot from the people who've bought these units and really are dependent upon the income, but our other people that are dependent upon the income are also losing out, and we've heard from so many of those. When you say there've only been a minimum number of complaints, the complaints that we have gotten as a council, either by phone calls, or emails, or whatever, from people who really have suffered some economic damage, or the damage of not being able to peacefully enjoy their own homes, has been really extensive, and so that's why we're aiming for balance on this. And when you say it's a right by the Coastal Commission, we're not trying to take away that right by the Coastal Commission to have short-term lodging, and that's why we aren't proposing banning short-term lodging, but instead, we're looking at how we can get this under control and figure out a way to peacefully coexist before we allow more. That's the reason that we're looking at this cap, because we need to figure out if what we're proposing is working, and if it is allowing people to get along and us to welcome visitors, and if it's not, figure out what we need to do to make sure that it works before we allow any more. The enforcement issue is a critical component, and I don't think we've got that right yet. We're starting, we are recommending, starting with the answering service, but we really need the help of our police department and our code enforcement officers to make sure that we get the bad experiences documented and start to find people that are really abusing this privilege. So that's something that we're going to be working on, and that's why we're asking for this to just stem the tide, because the possibility of 10,000 additional short-term lodging units in Newport Beach is just overwhelming, and I don't think we would be able to handle the complaints that we would get here at council if we just let this proliferate at a rate that it has. Simone, can you tell us what the rate is? I mean, this has grown so exponentially in such a short period of time.
So from the growth, we have looked at the data. We've grown maybe 50% in the last six to seven years, you know, from the last, our last recession and the significant growth, with the online platforms really taking off, and we're, now it's on your phone, not just on your PC, so in easy 50% growth on the number of permits.
Thank you. And I can understand how corporations that are buying multiple properties and real estate agents that were looking at the potential, like their business plan probably showed that they could make gazillions of dollars within the next five to 10 years in Newport Beach if we didn't do anything about it. So I understand how those people are a little bit concerned that we might be putting a cap on this and looking at how it works before, because if we just let it go unregulated and let the numbers grow at the rate they've been growing, we will change our community from a residential community to basically a hotel, just one big hotel where, and I've gotten so many complaints from people during COVID saying, "This is my dream to live in Newport Beach, and this is no fun." I am just miserable here, because we can't live with the inconveniences that are being forced upon us, not just short-term rental, but the noise and the lack of enforcement. So enforcement is, it is a critical need for us and something that we're going to have to continue to look at. And I did think it was an interesting suggestion that the 24-hour line include perhaps all nuisance violations, and I think maybe we should look at that and see if that's something that we should incorporate into this in the future. The other idea was that I did really like the 25-year-old minimum for renting these units, and I thought we talked about that, but apparently we didn't get it into the ordinance. We can consider that for the future. The other thing is that I think, you know, Airbnb came up with a no-party policy, and I think, you know, at some point, we may have to look at a no-party policy, because if people are renting these short-term rentals just to have a bachelor party or a shower or whatever, and you've got that sometimes twice a week next door to you, it's a big difference between having a long-term neighbor. So there are some things that we are going to need to continue to look at, but this is something that we have worked so hard to come up with, just a really reasonable set of conditions that we'd like to get in place and then take it to Coastal that we'd like to get in place, and then take it to Coastal and explain to Coastal what we're trying to do, that we're not trying to stop it, and get this cap into place until we figure out if it's working. And then if it's working at some point in the future, we might say we could up that cap. Or if it's not working, we might find additional regulations that we could put into place. But this is really, this is a culmination of a lot of work, and we've taken it very seriously. And we've tried to not take any of the comments that we've heard from people for granted or dismiss them. We've tried to really incorporate them into our proposed ordinance. We hope that you understand how much work we've put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? I'll say a couple things. So the, it strikes me that if this was completely reasonable, we probably wouldn't have this many objections tonight. And you're seeing a lot of folks right now whose livelihoods, whose incomes and whose, who are Newport residents, and, you know, they're able to afford and live in our city because of this industry, are coming out and objecting tonight. And so the, and I also understand the concerns that they've voiced, which is the language that this council has used in our preambles enacting our most recent changes was particularly harsh against the, this industry. And it's an industry that, as Mr. Hurdman pointed out, has been around for a century or more. And it's been something that has already always been on Peninsula. It's always been on the island. A lot of, it seems to me, actually, on the island in particular, people are starting to kind of convert those back into homes. I'd love to know what the stat is on the island, whether we're seeing, you know, an uptick or a decrease on areas like that. The concern I've got is, as I'm listening to this, yeah, I'm sure that there are more complaints as we've been going through. The issue on that 84 number, it wasn't complaints, it was citations. And when we're trying to figure out how to regulate a massive industry that's existed for a century, I would kind of assume that we'd have a lot more data to be able to show. I'd assume that we'd be able to actually do an evidence-based approach here that says that, you know, these specific, that this, this, this number of citations have been given out, boy, we've seen a real uptick. We don't have that. I haven't seen it, and I'd love to know it. And the problem is that if we don't have the evidence-based approach to regulate and pass fairly sweeping regulations that we are not confident that the Coastal Commission would even approve, that has, I'm concerned about that. And I watched the planning commission meeting. They weren't confused. They just didn't agree. And I think there's a huge difference there. And, you know, having the, having our planning commission disagree, you know, we've, it's okay. We've overridden our planning commission before, but I think it's wrong to say that they didn't understand this. They did. They just didn't agree. So I think at this point, we're at that point where we passed, we passed some, you know, fairly sweeping new regulations in place. We're going to have a 24-hour call up and running soon enough. And if the, you know, if the complaints are valid and vetted out, then they'll result in citations. And then, and we can see how this, this new sweeping regulation that we put in place will, will play out. But I think that, I think we've got a, and I'll just say on a side note, one of the other things that we've been talking, we haven't seen also is an economic analysis. I know some of the public speakers talked to, talked to that as a question mark. It's a valid question, because if we've got $4 million or so in TOT coming from the short-term lodging industry, multiplied out in the sales tax, and also they're obviously paying property taxes on top of all of that, and if this is driving an increased value in the property taxes, then we're seeing an increase there. You know, $4 million plus, you know, an increase in sales and otherwise, if, you know, if we're, if we're seeing a push that would cause, you know, an economic hit to any of that, I'd like to see that analysis. Because one of the things that Gary Scher went over and visited Newport Beach has done a really good job of explaining to us and the public constantly is that, yeah, you know, the summer in Newport, it's a beautiful place. We have a lot of people who come here. And a lot of the folks that we see bring in the tourism dollars end up paying for essentially, so the three or four months of traffic and congestion and frustration pay essentially for the nine months of our police services, the rest of the, the rest of the year. You know, we've seen, we see how this industry plays out, and we're not about to go try to push back on this in a way that causes us to not be able to provide the services for the rest of the year that we're able to provide because of an industry like this one. So it's, it's, there is a balancing, of course, there's a balancing. But I'd like to see more data before I would start pushing back aggressively. Mr. Muldoon.
Your staff knows how I feel, but essentially...
Could you, Mike?
By the way, it feels like we're in the back of the classroom, Duffy and I. We're throwing spitballs, we're making cracking jokes. But I, obviously, I lean towards less regulation, and I would either want to continue this till there's a better time to make changes in the economy, or outright move on without these proposals. Thank you.
All right. Okay, seeing no more discussion. I think if I understand it correctly, Mr. Jurgis, what you're looking for tonight is a, basically a straw poll to figure out moving forward. And the only two that I've, the only two items that you're asking for is a three-night minimum, and then the cap on, on the number of permits?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we're going to take a straw poll on those two items. So if you'd like staff to come back and bring forward a three-night minimum, go ahead and raise your hand.
That would be everyone except for Mayor O'Neill and Councilmember Muldoon.
Okay. And then, was it 1550, Mr. Jurgis? Okay. If you're interested in seeing a cap at 1550 permits, go ahead and raise your hand.
Everyone except Mayor O'Neill, councilmembers Duffield and Muldoon.
Okay. So since that, that straw poll came back, there's, there is the item, the matter of how we would actually define a transfer. And, and I think that that's fairly important for us to kind of work through. So for example, man, I could come up with a handful of them. Do you have any, Mr. Harp, that I, off the top of your head, to kind of work through as you're working through the, the language?
So I think the most important ones are, would you allow inter-familial transfers? If someone passes away, can it be transferred to their heirs? If someone purchased the property, does it transfer to the new owner? Those are probably the three biggest ones.
I heard two there. Sorry. I heard familial and then sale of the property.
Or heir, heirs, because it may not be family members.
Okay. Family, heirs, and, so if there's, here's the, here's the question. So let's say we hit the cap, and there's 1,550 permits issued. And so we're not issuing any more new permits. The question is whether any of those three that were just listed are considered new permits, or whether they would be able to still transfer. So let's say we have 1,550, and we have a waitlist of anything. It doesn't matter how many. And someone dies who owns the permit, are they able to transfer that permit to an heir or a family member without it being considered a new permit?
Yes.
And, all right, I'll tell you what. We'll do a straw poll on that one. So if you say yes, raise your hand.
It's permitted to transfer.
Yes, it would, that person would be able to transfer to an heir or a family member. I'm going to just combine those two, Mr. Harp, heir or family member. And then the other, the other...
Hold on, Mayor, for heir or family member, everyone except for Councilmember Brenner.
Okay. And then the next, the next question is if we're, if the, would, let's say that, I'm going to use my house because you can't short-term lodge. You can't get a permit at my house, but I'm going to do it hypothetically. No, 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 you can't. No, 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 no. We're not expanding. So anyway, they, so let's say that, let's say you've got, let's say I own a short-term lodging permit. I'm going to sell my house. Am I able to transfer the short-term lodging permit along with the sale of that, of that house?
I think that's what we just said.
No, that, so the, just to come back for a second, the difference is if a person dies, can they essentially will their, their property, the permit to a person who is, you know, heir or family or however, however you prefer?
But overall transferability, I think that's what we're talking about.
And so the overall transferability question is if a person were to sell a piece of property that currently has a short-term lodging permit associated with it, can that person transfer the permit along with the property? That's the, that's the question. So if your answer is yes, go ahead and raise your hand. Transfer or sign? Yeah, however the language is going to show up in this statute.
Everyone, yes, except for Councilmember Brenner.
Okay. All right. If you, if further questions come up, we can bring it forward at the time that we bring it forward. But any other, any...
I have another suggestion, if you want. We did have talk, Councilmember Brenner talked about the...
All right, just make sure you're speaking into the mic.
Excuse me, about the age limit. And this has something that we probably wish we would have addressed earlier, but if we're, along, we're adding to a list to improve, we go to the minimum age of 25, I would propose.
Is there, can we, just to be clear, Mr. Harp, could we, would we be able to straw poll that right now? Minimum age requirement?
Yes.
We could. Okay. All right. If you are, if you think that someone should be at least 25 years, at least 25 or over 25? Sorry. At least 25. All right. If you think that someone needs to be at least 25 years old to be able to rent a short-term lodging, go ahead and raise your hand.
Just like to state, if you can die for our country, you can have a good time.
Yeah.
That would be Mayor Protam Avery, Councilmember Dixon Brenner and Hurdman, saying yes.
All right. Okay. All right. To everyone who came out tonight, really appreciate your coming out and testifying. And this will be coming back for further consideration at council. Okay, I said I thought we'd probably be there. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. We're not done yet. So our next item is, it's called public comments on closed session. I will say real quickly, we're, we're going to bump our closed session to the next meeting. We're just not going to have time for it right now. And, but that being said, we'll open it up for public comments on non-agenda items. Does anyone have any public comments on non-agenda items? Or agenda or non-agenda?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. If I had a comment about the closed session, if it does come, the closed session item that was announced has to do with a city-owned property, which was formerly the West Newport Beach Community Center. I would suggest the way that it's been noticed for this meeting is very opaque. It just says you will be meeting to instruct negotiators as to a price or terms of payment. If it comes back on your next agenda, I would suggest it would be very easy to say, if that is the case, that it's to instruct the negotiators about an adjustment to the rent or the terms of payment, because the property is currently under a 10-year lease. If it's about an adjustment to the rent or when the rent will be paid, it would be easy to say that. If the item is about a possible sale of the property and a price for the sale, it would be easy to say that. However, if it is about a sale, I believe the council should publicly discuss whether it's desirable to sell the property before talking about the price. And then I have a comment that I would like to make about agenda item Roman numeral 13, which is where you're going to discuss voting to put things on a future agenda. Two of those items involve measures on the November ballot. You are going to be asked to direct staff to spend city resources, coming up with arguments about those ballot propositions. One to find arguments to justify the city being against one, the other to be in favor of the other. The law allows cities to conduct and publicize the results of an impartial analysis of how a proposition affects a city. It does not allow a city to use taxpayer money to tell voters whether they should vote yes or no. This is telling the staff to come up with a particular answer. We oppose this. Why do we oppose it? The answer is predetermined. It sounds like city resources were being used for electioneering. I think that's improper, and I think you should consider that when you consider voting to put these on an agenda. I do not think they should be on a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on agenda or non-agenda? All right. Any calls? All right, we'll go to the phone. Hi, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Matthew Hore. Hey, I live on Babal Island. I just wanted to call and see what we can do about reopening the boardwalks on Babal Island. I know that Orange County has moved to red tier today, and Newport Beach would actually be in yellow tier if it was done by city, with an only 1.2% positive rate of COVID. The alleys are crowded and dangerous now with people running, walking, walking their dogs, cars going both ways. Summer's over, the crowds are gone, and we'd like to see some people's faces instead of their backs. And I want to see what everyone has to say about that.
All right. Thank you. Any other calls? All right, I saw we had one in the community room, so go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Oh, oh, there I am. Hello. My name is Sylvia Santana, and I live over here in Newport, over by the Back Bay, and there's currently a project underway that's called the Newport, the, no, it's called Big Canyon Coastal Habitat Restoration and Adaptation Project. So this project is right underneath my balcony. It's taking place. And I have another one of my neighbors here, and we are here to ask for a second look at this project. They are sawing and bulldozing many trees, and there's a big empty patch, and I believe that it needs to have a little more oversight. I've read some of the material on the website. I've seen some of the YouTube video that they had for the kickoff. And I believe there is a huge impact on our residents that are, that enjoy the park the way it is. We have been home. Some of us lost our jobs. Some are working from home. And part of our outlet was being out on the trails. And now it's getting destroyed. Maybe for Back Bay Conservancy, it's not destruction. But if you, anyone can come and look at the empty patch, it's not even a patch, it's acres of no trees now. And the gentleman, Bob Stein, who's the project manager, mentioned to one of the neighbors, who's an owner of like eight units, that he didn't see any wildlife in that canyon. And I'm here to tell you, as a resident, that is part of the beauty of that canyon, including the pepper trees that they say they're only removing. I am asking for it to stop and for someone to come take a second look. You know, this Back Bay and the canyon, they meet. It's not an unusual situation. It happens all over the world. But people don't just tear out trees. And the other thing is...
Can she hear me?
As this, they described this Brazilian pepper tree as a horrible tree. And it's not a horrible tree. Oh, it's not a horrible tree.
All right. Yeah, so we've hit three minutes. If you could wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Okay, so it impacts the wildlife. It impacts the residents... Okay, so it impacts the wildlife, it impacts the residents, we have many schools in the area, and where are the animals going to go?
All right. Thank you very much.
One more person.
Good to see you all again, at least at a distance this time. It's been a while. Been in Newport 40-some years, close to 50, living in the East Bluff area for the last 20 or so. I think the last time we had a chance to be here for you all in City Council was, if you all remember, the puppy mill problems and the, so to speak, protests that we had over on Coast Highway. So it has been a while. I'm not a frequent visitor here. But Sunday morning, I went out on the balcony with my cup of coffee before church and looked out, and instead of trees, I saw dirt. And I always had been under the impression that the Back Bay area, it's been referred to in several different commentary, some people refer to it as the Big Canyon Coastal Habitat Restoration and Adaptation Project. That's a mouthful. I always knew it as a bird sanctuary, and for the last 30 years or so, had been told that the property had been given to Newport Beach by someone well-to-do and that it was to remain as it is for perpetuity. Sadly, that's not what we see outside the balconies today. I did go online, started to do some research. What I find is most confusing, some data says one thing, some says another. I'd like for at least some clarification from you all to be able to portray not only what has been removed so far, but what is planned to be removed over the next few weeks or in the near future. I hope that some trees are going to remain. I really don't feel that the value in the properties that are there, that we've paid for, were meant to look upon nothing but a bunch of dirt and mud. So please help us. As I said again, a little greenery never hurts anybody's day, and it would be nice. Just in summary, we're finding out that there's a lot of noise associated with the removal that's disconcerting as well. We're getting snakes and different insects, one a yellow scorpion that I'd never seen before. I guess with the dirt movement and the vibrations and what, whatever's there has been coming out and coming up on the property adjoining it where we are. I do feel a bit sorry for the wild animals that are down there. They're going to be losing their cover and what have you. So, and again, as I said, I was always told that was a bird sanctuary. And if we're not going to have any trees, I don't know what that's going to do to help the bird population, those, those wild indigenous species that a lot of people do come to Newport to visit and see. So anyway, thank you all very much, and we'd like to hear back from you all in the near future.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Any other speakers? Okay. Oh, yes, we do. All right.
Hi, yes. I wanted to speak about that subject as well. I've been living in that area for nine years, and I've been going to that forest almost every single day. And I have taken into account what the Newport Bay Conservancy is saying. And I guess I'm just trying to say, as someone who lives there and goes to that forest every single day, those trees were providing value. And I think that there might be a way to save some of the trees. I understand if it needs to be thinned out or if they want to create more space for the native shrubbery, but there is quite a lot of native shrubbery, and parts of the forest already did the damage that the pepper trees do. And now they're giving a tremendous amount of CO2 for our air, they're keeping the temperature cool, they're giving us a beautiful space to go and be in nature. And all I'm asking is that, you know, every single day that goes by, 20 or 30 trees are cut down. There's something like 400 or 500 trees down there. We do have a chance to possibly rethink this and look at it from a holistic view of trying to do what's best for the water, but also trying to value the trees. And so I'm just asking that you would take it seriously because every day that goes by, more and more of the forest is, is going. And I just want to see if there's some way to save some of the trees and do what you guys are trying to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. Okay. Last one. No? Oh, okay. All right. It's currently 6:37. We need to get some sustenance into us for the rest of the meeting. So, you know, by, at this point, might as well just start at 7:00. Yeah, all right. We're going to start the regular meeting at 7:00, so we'll stand in recess until then. Thank you.